City Council, in accordance with the Virginia Beach City Code, Section 2-21, the undersigned call for a special meeting of the Virginia Beach City Council to hold a public briefing on the shooting events of Friday, March 26, 2021, at the Virginia Beach Oceanfront on Tuesday, March 30, 2021, 1:00 p.m., Virginia Beach Convention Center, 1019th Street, Suite 5. And the signatories are Councilman Jones, Councilman Rouse, and Council Lady Wooton. Okay, at this point, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Mr. DeHaney.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, and members of council and members of our community. The events that unfolded on... The events that unfolded in the city late on Friday, March 26, were by any measure both horrific and devastating. Two people were killed and eight others were seriously wounded in a series of senseless acts of violence within our city. I want to express my condolences to the families and the victims. Their grief and pain is surely beyond measure. Few situations are more serious for us than when one of our officers takes a life. I also want to express my appreciation for the many people who have shared their concerns and offered recommendations for how to address the underlying circumstances that contributed to this violence. We are examining every avenue available to us to prevent these incidents from happening in the future. I am grateful to the first responders who rushed toward danger to protect and save as many lives as possible. You may be aware that the initial exchange of gunfire took place within yards of a police officer. And within that... And within minutes, we had more than 100 police and dozens of fire and EMS personnel on the scene. The disregard for consequences is a stark reminder of how much work there is to do. While there are many law enforcement and civilian witnesses to interview and footages from cameras to examine, the fact that the camera worn by the officer who shot Mr. Lynch was not activated is a serious problem. We have already taken steps to procure the technology needed to ensure that cameras automatically turn on when an officer removes their firearm from its holster. However, as the chief will explain, we are facing both manufacturing and production issues related to the slowdown of its deployment. As you will hear from the chief, disagreements were the center of the initial shooting. To ensure we all share the same base of information for the benefit of our residents and our citizens, I have asked him to review what happened and where we are with the investigation. We will then open the floor for your council... For counsel for your questions and dialogue. I want to assure this body and our community that we are resolute in our commitment to be as transparent, thorough, and expeditious as possible, given the parameters of a criminal and internal investigation. While everyone wants immediate answers, we must allow the experts to do the work, and that takes time. At this time, Chief Newtigate will brief you on the events that occurred on that day and also where we are with the investigations and answer any additional questions that council may have.
Thank you, Mr. DeHaney. Chief Newtigate, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Thank you to the council for having me in this afternoon. I'd like to start this afternoon by once again expressing condolences on behalf of the Police Department to everyone that was affected by the violence this past Friday night. I truly appreciate the opportunity to come in and discuss process and to clear up some of the lingering questions that we have in our community. Unfortunately, I will only be able to provide some general overview of the three shooting incidents that occurred as they are continuing criminal investigations. And we have to be very cognizant about not doing anything to potentially taint a potential prosecution. Fortunately, with the three separate shootings that occurred after 11:00 p.m. this past Friday, I will now give you an update, starting with the first one that occurred at Lannick at 20th. We know from our investigation that we have five males that were observed firing handguns. That gunfire struck nine individuals, six males and three females. Of the three females, one is still in serious condition, and it is anticipated that she will be hospitalized for quite some time. It should be noted that we had a second precinct officer that was present at the time of this gunfire. He pursued and apprehended one suspect in the 19th Street Hotel parking lot after a foot pursuit. We know that we have charged three people so far with multiple counts of malicious wounding. We know from interviews and information from our Special Investigations Bureau that the arrested individuals are associated with two local gangs. We know that we recovered 14 firearms from this incident alone. I know there's a question... I've seen it in the community, wanting to know why we're able to bring such quick resolution to this incident while we still have two other ones that are pending and we've not been able to be as expeditious. One, we had an officer on the scene. Two, we had help from video. We had a city pole cam that caught quite a bit of this incident, as well as private cameras. And three, some of these individuals were not unknown to the Virginia Beach Police Department. Our Virginia Beach Police Department Special Investigation Section were aware of these individuals. They were working a long-term investigation with our partners from ATF that resulted in the search warrants that we served Sunday morning that have resulted in three additional arrests. Those three, we are pursuing federal charges with ATF. And I do anticipate that as we continue to move forward, we will make additional arrests related to this incident. The next incident is the 300 Block and 19th Street. The victim was Deshala Harris. We know that the victim and her friends were on the south sidewalk on 19th Street, just past the south lot entrance, when she sustained a fatal gunshot wound. We know that a VBPD officer attempted lifesaving efforts to no avail. The current status of the investigation is now focusing on an exchange of gunfire between multiple parties in the 19th Street North Lot. Just to give you a picture of what that one looked like, 56 shell casings recovered, three firearms recovered, nine vehicles struck by gunfire. And the police-involved shooting of Mr. Donovan Lynch. We know that yesterday homicide detectives were able to interview both officers. One was the involved officer in uniform, and one was a plainclothes detective that had responded to investigate the first shooting incident. As you know, I'll be unable to go into specific facts of the interview as it is still an ongoing criminal investigation. But our investigators are still in the process of reviewing body-worn camera footage, as well as video footage obtained from the surrounding area. We conducted an additional canvas on Sunday, March 28, and we are currently reviewing city cameras to see if any portion of this incident was captured. At this point in time, we have no video from a city camera. As much as we want transparency, as much as the community wants transparency, the Police Department wants transparency. I'm used to a model that usually, within 24 to 36 hours after an incident such as this, we can stand in front of our community and put out the... A statement, some video of what occurred. I can tell you that I have worked a lot of these in 32 years of policing. This is the first time that I've encountered a situation where we've had no body-worn camera footage, we've had no independent video footage, we've had no immediate independent witnesses, and we did not have a more timely statement from involved parties. So as much as we want to be transparent to our community, and they deserve it, it's hard to be transparent when we have very little information to guide our response and our investigation. I know that there's been a big question in the community about why it took so long for us to interview the officers. It truly comes down to the Fifth Amendment. Fifth Amendment protection. Every citizen has the right, under the Constitution, that no person shall be compelled in any criminal case to be a witness against himself. The Fifth Amendment protects any person during questioning by the government related to an act which may result in criminal prosecution. Police officers, they don't lose their Fifth Amendment protection just because they don a uniform, and we have to respect that. We treated this criminal investigation just like we would any criminal investigation involving our citizens. The VBPD may compel an officer to answer questions truthfully in an administrative investigation. But we have to realize if we compel that statement, it is no longer admissible in a court of law. So I have seen statements out there that we should have forced the officer to provide a statement legally. We cannot do that. If we do that, that statement will not be allowed in court. And just like anyone else, the involved officer has a right to legal counsel. And we were conferring over the weekend with his counsel for him to come in and provide a voluntary statement, which he did yesterday afternoon. So just to provide some clarification, we are still conducting an active criminal investigation. We are gathering facts and evidence that we will provide to the Office of the Commonwealth Attorney, who will then make a legal determination on the action of the involved officer. The Police Department is not making any determination on whether the officer's actions were proper or not. That falls solely to Mr. Stolli. And then, once a determination has been made by the OCA, the Commonwealth Attorney, that would trigger our administrative investigation to determine whether the officer was in compliance with our policies and our procedures. And that is when we can compel a statement, if necessary. That would be when, if we had an independent citizen's review with independent investigative authority, that's when that would also trigger that process. It would not be until the completion of the criminal investigation. And there is no timetable on how long a criminal investigation could last. It could be three months from now. It could be six months from now. It could be longer, depending on how long it takes to make sure that we have all the facts and information in this incident. The PD, myself, we've heard the community's calls for an outside agency to conduct this investigation. And we agree. It's time to turn it over. So yesterday afternoon, I contacted the Virginia State Police and asked them to assume the investigation, and they have agreed to assist. I know that... I believe there will be a meeting this afternoon between the various entities to work out the logistics of that request. Hopefully, this will give our community the assurance that a comprehensive investigation will be conducted. But there's also a benefit to the department as it will put a fresh set of independent eyes on the investigations to identify any gaps or areas requiring follow-up. You know, we hope that we never have another police-involved shooting in Virginia Beach. That is what we all wish for. But if we do, as we move forward, I have no problem referring these investigations to the Virginia State Police. We know them to be a highly competent, highly capable organization. But I just want our community and our council to be aware of what that truly means. You know, right now, these three shooting incidents are the top priority for this Police Department. And I have the ability to prioritize response and personnel, just as I did Sunday when I ordered a recall of individuals to conduct another canvas on Sunday for witnesses and video. Once it is turned over, this PD no longer has any involvement. So I will no longer be able to stand in front of this council, in front of this community, and provide any update or questions. I know that many agencies are now turning their officer-involved shootings over to the Virginia State Police. So we will become one of several that they now have been tasked to work these tremendous tasks. Body-worn cameras. I know it's concerning for the community. It's very concerning for the Police Department. And it will be the main focal point once we're able to proceed with our administrative investigation. You know, there's been some misunderstanding in the community that believe body-worn cameras are always activated and recording, and that is only partially correct. The camera that we have, the Axon 2, is passively recording, and retains 30 seconds worth of buffer. So what that means is the camera is rolling, but for us to reclaim that prior 30 seconds, we have to activate it. The officer has to touch it. Officers are not working all the time with a camera activated. And that's for a number of reasons. One, I don't know of a Police Department in the world that has that in policy or procedure. For a few reasons. There are privacy concerns. When we interact with the citizens in a non-law enforcement capacity, there is some expectation to privacy. The amount of personnel that would be required to comply with FOIA and discovery would be unobtainable, unattainable. It is already a significant struggle for this department to keep up with the current demands for the BWC video that's captured in just a normal 10-hour shift. And battery life. You know, the cameras have to be docked. They're not recharged with a simple battery swap. And we would not want a situation where the camera is non-functioning in a critical incident due to a dead battery. You know, I don't have the immediate answers to discuss the lack of BWC in this incident. But what I can tell you, and I can tell our community, is for the most part, officers embrace this technology. Your officers are used to working under scrutiny. That's what we... When we sign up, we are used to being scrutinized, and as we should. The officers have found that the cameras not only hold themselves accountable, but it holds the community accountable. So I want to put out the narrative that policing as a whole has embraced this technology. And I've been living with this technology for the past four years. And I think as we move on and I talk to officers, they would be hard-pressed, and they would probably push back if I asked them to patrol their communities without a body-worn camera. One of the other issues that's come up is the use of the Signal Sidearm. This Police Department was very forward-thinking in the past year or so and actually attempted to acquire this technology that gets affixed to the holster that when the firearm is removed from the holster, it automatically activates the camera. Unfortunately, because it is such new technology, it does not fit on every holster. The holster that it is predominantly made for is backordered because it is the most popular holster and in use by probably 90% of all police departments and military organizations. So we were forced, as an agency, to go with a different holster that the Signal Sidearm is not manufactured for. So even though we've acquired it, we've paid for it, it has never been functional. We have been working through logistical challenges. I'm told that Axon has really stepped up to make us a new model. The challenge that we have now is it does not fit the existing screws of the current holster. So the holster manufacturer is in process of making extended screws that will allow the Signal Sidearm to fit between the holster and the shank on the gun belt. Unfortunately, I do not have a timetable on when that will occur. And I think last, I'd like to brief the council about oceanfront staffing and what occurred Friday night. We've heard the concerns from our residents and our visitors about the need for more police visibility at the oceanfront. I agree 100%. It is absolutely needed. You know, I've talked to many of the stakeholders involved. We've talked about possible suggestions. But we know that Friday night, outside of our normal season, where we usually have six officers dedicated to oceanfront activities specifically, we had doubled that with 12, one of which was a mountain bike officer who was the first one present at the initial shooting scene. To put this in reference, 12 officers in one zone. All other zones in the city typically have one officer. There were additional 13 officers assigned to the Second Precinct, handling routine calls for service with instructions to be visible in the oceanfront when not tied up on one of those calls. We had 25 officers available in that area Friday night. It took 103 to respond to the oceanfront to manage these three incidents. Moving forward, we have a layered implementation for enhanced oceanfront visibility. This weekend, special operations personnel will supplement the oceanfront staffing. What that looks like is the 13 dedicated officers that we have, plus approximately 15 from Special Ops. That will give us 28. Officers in the First, Third, and Fourth will have any discretionary leave canceled. And they will be pre-assigned, ready to respond if necessary. We are also going to try and augment their staffing numbers with overtime. Beginning April 8, we will be incrementally adding personnel as the summer approaches. The filing resources have been dedicated to the resort area. We will have additional Second Precinct personnel that were previously assigned to other zones. All Mounted Unit personnel, all school resource officers, certain special operations personnel. Effective April 8, when we have our shift change, we have reallocated the percentage of officers in the First, Third, and Fourth to increase the overall staffing in the Second Precinct. Once again, we will try to use some dedicated overtime monies to increase staffing. We are also implementing a new two-shift strategy. Historically, we have operated on a three-shift model, built around eight-hour days. We are on 10-hour days. So we are looking at a different model that on paper looks to put more officers on the street. We will see if it works and make some determinations from there. And I think last and foremost, you know, we have to thank Sheriff Stolli, something that has not traditionally been done. But we have reached out and had conversations and asked for his help and assistance in augmenting police visibility at the oceanfront during the summer season. And he has very graciously offered to step up with some dedicated officer visibility to help us with visibility and some of the traffic concerns that we have. So we're very grateful to the sheriff for assisting us in this manner. Will this address all the issues? Ladies and gentlemen, this is not a long-term solution. It absolutely is not. We are 100 officers short. Those 100 officers could field a precinct dedicated solely to oceanfront operations. I will tell you that my initial assessment, even though I've only been here five months, is that we're not just down 100 officers. We probably need 150 to 200 additional officers to provide the policing services for a city this size and that the community expects. And we have to remember that it's more than just visibility. Please remember that we had an officer physically present, physically present, standing there or straddling a mountain bike when this first shooting occurred. You know, the staff, I've talked to the staff, and they have provided me numerous incidents from previous years when shootings and shots fired have occurred within feet of them. Uniform Virginia Beach Police officers. And people have fired shots and shot other people in their immediate presence. You know, there has to be a holistic, city-wide approach that is more than just your Police Department. But we will look forward to working with the community, working with the council, working with city administration to be a large part of that. I submit myself to questions.
Okay, any questions? Okay, Aaron, Rosemary, and then Sabrina.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before we begin, I want to express my condolences to Deshala Harris, the young lady who was an innocent bystander who lost her life. So I want to express my condolences to her family. Also, I'd like to express my condolences to the family of Donovan Lynch. I know his father very well. Upstanding man himself. So I want to express my condolences to him.
Yes, sir.
Chief, you've only been here for five months. And already, you know, you're under a lot of pressure. With that being said, I have a lot of questions
Yes, sir.
to my colleagues. I'm not going to ask all of my questions right now. Ask a few, and then you can come back to me. One of the things from your presentation early on, I heard you say, and I want to commend you for, is asking for help. Is asking for independent investigation and asking for help from our state police. I think that is something that would tremendously help our community out. I believe that a transparent and outside eye and accurate and thorough investigation is what's needed and help bring a sense of trust within our community. So I want to thank you for that.
Yes, sir.
The other thing, a few questions I have, and we can come back to these because I know my councilmembers have a lot. One is guns in our city. What are your thoughts? You just gave us an update on the shootings. How is, if I'm not mistaken, the shootings within our city has risen 70% in our city since 2019, if I'm not mistaken? So I'd like to understand your thoughts on that. Two, the safety of our oceanfront. What can we do to make it safe? And then, three, what's on everyone's mind is the interaction between our police officers and our citizens. I think we need to understand more about the cameras. I heard your... In your presentation on why the officer's camera was not on. So I need for you to walk the public and myself through your protocols for body-worn cameras. What are they? When are they activated? And when are they turned off? And so to speak. So I know that's a lot. I have a lot more, but we can start there. And I want to thank you for being here as well. One last comment I want to make. This is a comment for this council. And you know, council, I love to challenge us to do better and to do more. I don't think an officer who's just got here for five months should be in front of every single camera when something happens. We have a mayor. We have a vice mayor. You are the leader of our city. In conjunction with the chief, you all should be up there too. Because our community is looking for answers. He doesn't have them all, but you all have been here for over 20 years. This is not to make anyone uncomfortable. If it does, then we have to get comfortable being uncomfortable. But you are leaders of this city. And so I want to thank my colleague, Sabrina Wooton, my colleague, Councilman Lewis Jones, for calling this special session. Chief, you can continue.
Thank you, Councilmember Rouse. Starting with the first question, thoughts on shootings overall? Virginia Beach is experiencing what the nation has been afflicted with, is a precipitous increase in gun violence since early of 2020. We are doing our best to restructure and re-task some individuals to be focused on gun violence. We have started restructuring our stat process to be more solely focused on gun violence. It's been my experience for us to be successful is that we really have to wrap it around a crime-gun intelligence process that we have to utilize the tools and technology to link trigger pullers with firearms. And we get our best bang for the buck working with our federal partners for enhanced federal prosecution. So we've had some dedicated squads in each of the precincts. We have refocused them into crime suppression squads where previously they'd kind of been a master of all trades, and we'd asked a lot of them. So we are singularly focusing them more on a crime suppression initiative. If I had the bodies available, we would have a dedicated violence reduction unit that would look at everything from a citywide and a regional perspective, working with our friends in Norfolk and the surrounding areas. Because make no mistake about it, we know that criminals travel beyond jurisdictions. So it absolutely has to be a regional approach in conversations with ATF to see if there's a way to get some of the technology here for us to submit our own firearms and shell casings for comparison so that if we arrest an individual and he is illegally carrying a firearm, that within 48 to 72 hours, I will have that firearm test fired, fingerprinted DNA'd, entered into the National Integrated Ballistic Information Network. I will get a correlation back linking that firearm with any of the criminal offenses that have occurred, not only in Virginia Beach, but any other regions. And it could even go nationwide. So we have a lot of individuals that we arrest with firearms. We just can't tell you the story right now. But we're going to work to try to bring that technology to the beach so that if you are caught with a firearm, we will know. technology to the beach so that if you are caught with a firearm, we will know the telltale story. And if it's linked to other crimes, then we're going to take the appropriate action. Safety at the oceanfront is, like I mentioned, it has to be holistic. It is beyond the capability of just this police department. I think an absolute wonderful step, and I was immensely pleased to see, you know, at the direction that the manager implemented the resort management office, that we now have a centralized point to help us with a number of initiatives. The block-by-block ambassadors, I think, will make a huge difference for us. They are that extension of the city. They are that extension of the police department, and they provide eyes and ears when the police can't be there. One of the, one of, a couple of other areas that we absolutely have to address, it kind of goes back to, you know, the broken windows theory, which I believe in in certain regards, that we have to maintain the appearance of our properties down there or put pressure on those that own them, rent them, lease them. Because if we don't, and there is an appearance that the government doesn't care, that attracts crime and disorder.
Can you elaborate a little bit more on cameras? You stated, obviously, that there are no body-worn camera, no independent video. Were there public cameras that we control down there?
No, what, you know, part of that, council member, what we're doing is, of course, we've looked at all the city cameras under our control, have not found anything related to Mr. Lynch's death. We're now continuing our canvas of private establishments to see if anybody captured video that would shed some light on this incident.
So are there areas down there, would you say we can increase camera, place some more cameras down at the oceanfront to make it more safe?
I think cameras are always a huge component of safety, you know, much like the community. I think probably much like everyone at the DIAS. The fact that we do have a substantial amount of cameras down there, but it did not capture any of this incident, but that's, that is factual. Could we always use more cameras? I would never turn down cameras. They are a great reactive tool for investigations. I would want to counsel the community and counsel that many times there's an appearance that we employ, deploy cameras, that they're really this proactive piece. The benefit really comes in helping us solve crimes that occurred. So they are a great reactive tool. I would never turn down additional cameras in an area. It helps us solve crimes. It helps us solve homicides. We just have to remember what role they play in our overall safety plan.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Wilson, and then Ms. Wooton, and then Mr. Wood.
Mr. Mayor, here, yeah, one more question.
And you did, and I hate to ask you to repeat it, but I can't read the manager's handwriting.
Protocols for cameras, for body cameras.
Yes, sir.
Cutting them on, cutting them off.
Yes, sir.
In this particular incident, you know, what are concerns and the concerns of the public is that, obviously, if there's no camera, and which this council has funded $5 million for body cameras, if there's no camera footage, then what else can they rely on to make sure we understand exactly what happened? So I think the first step is understanding, what is the protocols when it comes to body-worn cameras?
You know, our policy is very similar to national policies in other police departments our size, that they'll activate their BWC immediately upon arriving at a scene or making an official contact with a citizen in the performance of their duties to include, but not limited to, calls for service, traffic stops, crashes, officer-initiated investigations, any encounter likely to result in arrest, any encounter where use of force is likely to occur, vehicle pursuits, foot pursuits. You know, it's a pretty comprehensive policy that is very similar to the one we had in Cincinnati and very much in tune with the ones that I've been exposed to across the nation. And I think, and I know everybody wants me to answer why, but that is part of that administrative investigation. And unfortunately, I'm not going to be able to provide answers to the community and this council until the criminal investigation has run its course and that the Commonwealth's attorney tells me that it is now safe to proceed with administrative investigation, because we have to remember during an administrative investigation, they are acting in a compelled fashion under the direction of the manager and administration, that they have to comply as conditions of their employment. That pretty much makes everything we do compelled. And we know we can't compel statements to be used in a court of law. So as we continue to now work with the VSP to turn this investigation over to them, and I think that is the priority right now for the department, I think that's what the community is clamoring for, that's what they deserve, is let us turn it over to the Virginia State Police, let them put fresh eyes on it, look at it from a different perspective, then take it to the Commonwealth's attorney and present the facts in entirety of the incident and let the chips fall where they fall.
Okay, Ms. Wilson?
Thank you. I have several questions too, thank you. But first of all, I really do want to thank our men and women in blue for, when everybody else is running from danger, they're running into it to protect us. And we really are grateful to them to go into a place where bullets are flying and a very, very dangerous place. And I know one of our officers was hit by a car. And I'm very, very grateful to them and also to you, chief. But anyway, I also would like to offer my condolences and sympathies to those that were injured and killed and their families. I was a little confused on how many suspects were arrested. Was it three and then three more, or was it just three in total? And I would like to know, I think some of these individuals already had a track record of trouble with the law and, you know, to kind of get an idea of what kind of people we're dealing with here. Secondly, we always used to have a no cruising policy on Atlantic Avenue, and it's my understanding there was cruising going on before this incidence, you know, back and forth around Atlantic Avenue, and about enforcing the no cruising policy. And I think a lot of us have seen the video that's been going on the internet of the huge numbers that were down at the Dairy Queen, and I don't think they were there just to buy ice cream, and how you can break up this large, large group of people. And, you know, there was music that I certainly wouldn't want my grandchildren to be hearing playing. And then the fourth thing that I would like to ask is, I hadn't heard until you said today that this was, they were gang-related, and I, but in my mind, I thought this had to be gangs related to this. And I think that is a regional problem. These are people coming not just from Virginia Beach, from the other cities. And is there any thought to putting together a regional task force on this gang situation? Because these participants are from all over. Thank you.
First and foremost, thank you, Councilmember Wilson. There were three arrests for the very first shooting incident that occurred at Atlantic and 20th. Those were individuals that we believe pulled the trigger and were responsible for shooting several of those individuals. The other three that we arrested Sunday morning, we do not believe that they were part of that initial shootout, but they are associates of those individuals. And it kind of goes back to, you know, whether you want to call it group or gang activity. You know, what I've found is that gangs don't exist in the traditional structure anymore. You know, since I've been here at the beach, we've really only talked about two or three gangs that we have, which is not a lot. What you have more often are groups of individuals that commit violent crimes together. But regardless of whether it's a group or a gang, we need to be able to address it. And it goes back to the conversation that I had, that we were restructuring our precinct officers into a crime suppression squad that will focus. And this is where we have to be careful, you know? We have to be laser-focused, evidence-based, and data-driven about the individuals that we go after. You know, we can't be seen as heavy-handed in our communities. But I think our communities also want us to arrest and prosecute the ones that are engaged in gun violence. We just have to be careful not to catch the other folks that may be engaged in some other minor activity up in that big wide net. And that's where we really lose the trust of the community. You know, and I think, you know, we have turned over this investigation to VSP because it's what the community is clamored for. But I can tell you, historically, I've been told this is the first time that that's happened. So up until now, there has been trust from this community in some regards that the Virginia Beach Police Department was going to do the right thing in a open, transparent fashion. So we just have to be careful that how we proceed with enforcement and interacting with our communities does not disenfranchise a large segment of our folks that are just trying to live day-to-day by we are, and that our efforts are specifically focused on those engaged in violent activities. I think you asked me about the cruising policy. You know, these are very difficult circumstances, because a lot of times it's nuisance conduct. Some individuals may not wish to see it, but is it really the type of activity that you want to focus our law enforcement efforts on? And I think that goes back to the holistic approach that we wrap our heads around, how to deal with it from maybe a non-enforcement position, and we look at some type of traffic calming or different traffic pattern. But we also have to be, you know, cognizant of the concerns of, you know, the stakeholders in the business district that are also concerned about residents, tenants, and those individuals that want to frequent their establishment. So there's a lot of things in play as we move forward, but I think that's where we need to be. We need to be holistically looking at how to address the conditions at the beach from more than just a law enforcement perspective. It's got to be place-based. We have to look at crime prevention through environmental design. We have to engage with the community that's down there. And I think the big thing that we have to do is figure out, you know, who is coming to visit our resort area and how can we structure around them. It's just, we have to be very careful, because we don't want to be seen as oppressive and discouraging people from coming to the oceanfront. And, you know, and the Dairy Queen, yes. Officers had responded to the Dairy Queen, and it gets, you know, it's challenging. And I think that's where we work with Mr. Maddox to try to come up with a plan. But trying to address that through sheer arrest, I find that that is a very short-term solution. That is not going to solve the problem for us long-term. Long-term has to be a combination of effective resources and engagement.
And the people that were arrested, what kind of records did they already have? And there were other issues there? And also about approaching this regionally with the gangs or any other problem? Because we're not the only city that's having problems with gunfire.
Absolutely. I don't have their records in front of me. You know, what I can tell you is after discussions with my staff, you know, our detectives and special investigations were familiar with these individuals in some capacity. And that's, you know, I think that aided our efforts in making some quick arrests. And regionally, it absolutely has to be a regional approach, but first and foremost, we have to figure out our process in Virginia Beach so that we can take it to our partners and work in conjunction. There's already regional efforts being done. We have great working relationships. I have already met with the head of ATF, DEA, FBI, the U.S. Attorney here. Everybody has assured me that we have a great, great working relationship. We have a great working partnership with these entities, and that we are all pulling in the right direction. We just need to internally first focus our efforts on a more laser-focused manner to address those engaged in gun violence, and then we will expand our efforts to a regional initiative.
Thank you.
Ms. Wooton?
Thank you. So I'm going to start off with a brief comment as to why this meeting was called, and then I do have some questions.
Yes, ma'am.
So we were talking about protocol and procedures. Now, in my mind, protocol procedures are keenly important, because, especially in police shootings, because when you follow the procedures, it saves lives. And we know when we don't follow procedures, things can certainly go awry very fast. And so the fatal incident that occurred on Friday, March 26th, it culminated, as we know, in the death of a young man, Donovan Lynch. Deshala Harris was also murdered. And there were others who were countlessly injured. And so first and foremost, I'd like to certainly extend my sincere condolences to the family for the loss of their dear loved ones. It's very difficult to talk about and to have to deal with these issues, yet we do have them before us, and we do have to address them. And so while the death of Mr. Lynch, it's very important, I think it's also essential that we understand, as you mentioned, protocols, procedures, especially operating body cameras, when they're supposed to be activated, as has been mentioned, and deactivated. The process has to be transparent, it has to be upfront, it has to be forward for the public to understand. But please note, we cannot really focus on what happened particularly until we get that protocol down. I think that's really important. And so as a result, I called the meeting for three particular reasons. One was to understand the issue with the body camera and why the police officer didn't have the body camera activated. Secondly, I wanted to ensure that we focused on, you know, the energy and make sure we focus our energy in the right place, and we understand who Mr. Lynch was. Because at some point, I heard, you know, comments about, you know, that gentleman, Mr. Lynch, was deceased, and there was a gun in the vicinity, but there was no evidence supporting that it was his gun. And very quickly then, those comments, they cast a disparaging shadow, you know, over that individual or without facts and without that information clear to us and to the public. You know, Mr. Lynch was, my understanding, a VCU student. He was a faithful churchgoer, and he did have a license to carry a concealed weapon. Those are the things that I know about him and factual about Mr. Lynch. And so I wanted to make sure we understood who he was before we create this faceless person or picture about someone whom we don't know in this tragedy. And so finally, I think we must work collectively to make our environment better for our residents, for our business owners, for those who work in our city. An environment that is safe, that is secure, it's good for everyone, no matter who you are. Safety, public safety, security is very important, and we can all take a part in that. And so we definitely also must address the challenges that we're having with our youth. We're not the only ones having those, the issues. But we do have to address the challenges, and we have to support our youth and the challenges that they're going through. This is not an area that we can work in a silo with. A lot of these areas in dealing with our youth and violence start at a lower level, and things have to be addressed at every level. And so I think we all realize that. But the questions that I have, you've kind of talked a bit about them, about the body camera. So in your stating of the policy of the body camera, when it's to be activated, Chief, would you negate? The officer in this incident, did he activate his camera according to the policy of the police department?
At this point, I have no idea. That would be part of the administrative investigation, and we would ask those questions upon conclusion of the criminal investigation.
And so in the news, what I heard is that it was not activated, correct?
I know I do not have body-worn camera footage of the incident.
Okay, and you can't say whether the camera was activated or not, correct?
At this point, it was not activated for the incident.
Okay. And so the officer did not have an activated body camera as it relates to the policy of the department?
As we get into it, that will be the focus of the administrative investigation to find out if there were exceptional circumstances, if it malfunctioned, what the exact circum- find out if there were exceptional circumstances, if it malfunctioned, what the exact circumstances are.
Do you, well, let's talk about hypothetically. If there's an officer who is at a scene and does not operate his camera, or he doesn't activate it, is that against the policy guidelines?
It would be all dependent on the fact pattern of the exact incident.
Okay. Do you notice, or do you have a record, or do you make record when officers don't activate their cameras? How is that handled?
Well, I think right now, this is the very first audit that the city auditor is doing to take an assessment of that. I don't know that the police department has historically looked at that data. I have not seen that data since I've been here. So I think the city auditor's report will give us some clarity on what that looks like.
And in your capacity as chief, when this is the first incident for you, but going forward, if you have officers or know of officers who don't activate their body camera, what is your procedure? What would you do to address that?
Well, if it's a sustained violation, then we're going to enact discipline. Repeated incidents would be progressive. You could eventually be terminated for failure to activate your body camera, depending on the circumstances and the progressive discipline and the frequency of when it would occur.
And I think that's important because I think we have to, when we do find out what the audit produces, if we're seeing continued not activation of, you know, the body camera, we want to make sure we present that, prevent that from happening. Because if we have body cameras that are activated, then we have more understanding of what happens and issues in situations like this. And I think that's what we all want, to make sure that, you know, if our officers are performing the right way, we definitely want to know that, and the body camera is the best way to see that and to recognize that that's happening. And I think this issue is really important because activated body cameras restore trust in the community. And when officers are out in the community, it's important that they have the trust of the community. So it's important that those body cameras are activated and they're worn when they're designated to be so. And so that is particularly of a concern to me, not a specific question for you, but just an observation. Now, I also want to ask a question. You mentioned about the special signaling device, that it's the holster that it fits on, it's on back order?
The holster that we issue to our officers, we did not go with the most popular holster, which is Safari Land. That is the one that 90% of police departments use. It's in use by the military. My understanding is that the current issued holsters were in such need of repair, and we were not able to, Safari Land was not able to accommodate an order of 800-plus duty holsters for this organization. So we went with a different brand to ensure the safety of our officers. Because the Signal Sidearm is such new technology, it's really only made for one holster right now. So they have had to go back at our request to try to work with us to redesign the Signal Sidearm, which my understanding is that Axon has done that at our request. We have those in our possession. Unfortunately, when we tried to attach them to the holster, the screws are not long enough because the Signal Sidearm sits between the actual holster and the belt shank. So it adds a considerable amount of width to the holster that is on your side. Right now, we don't have the screws that will allow us to securely attach it to our holster. And the last thing that we would want to do is put our officers out there without the proper safety equipment, that if they would get in a struggle and someone would rip that holster off their belt, and now we have another lethal force encounter.
And how long have you been waiting on that back order for that particular item?
Ma'am, I don't know. Until this came up the other day, I had not really discussed Signal Sidearm.
Okay. Could you give me an answer for that?
Sure.
When you have an opportunity?
Absolutely.
So the other areas that I kind of want to focus on, we touched on quite a few of those areas, but I, the cameras, we talked about that are at the oceanfront. You have already mentioned that you don't have the footage for that, for those oceanfront cameras, and you have to go out to the community to get the footage for local business owners. Is that correct?
We have reviewed the city-owned cameras, looking for any of them that might have captured part of this incident. We have found nothing as of this time. So doing our due diligence, investigators are of course canvassing every private establishment to see if they do have a private camera system so that they could try to review it. They're doing everything they can to try to obtain every piece of available evidence that would shed some light on this tragedy.
And would that include the cameras that were located at the corner or the light, there's a light in a corner where the shooting happened of Mr. Lynch? Were you all able to get the footage from those cameras at the traffic light where that shooting took place?
I would have to specifically ask the detective bureau, but my understanding is that they have pulled video from every one of them. There may be some video. I would have to ask them. Part of the conversations is that the light that was there where this actual incident occurred was out, and I can tell you from standing out there that morning, it was incredibly dark. I believe we had to ask the fire department to come bring some illumination tools so that we could process the scene. So my gut would tell me that even if we captured video because of the lack of lighting, there's probably very little on that, but that's just speculation.
Mm-hmm.
You know, that will be part of the investigation as they continue to canvas, and then they will compile all that information. And like I indicated, that is not the police department making a determination on the propriety of the actions. This information goes to our elected Commonwealth attorney, and then he will make a determination on the propriety of the officer's actions.
Now, how about, you know, we talk a lot about cameras, and as you mentioned, you certainly will welcome more cameras. I think also lighting is an issue too at some places, and we do have to make sure we have bright lighting, and we need to make sure if there are blighted areas, we need to address those blighted areas, and we need to make sure we have the proper lighting across the board, you know, on the oceanfront and in different areas. But in terms of drones, it's my understanding that during something in the water, drones were used. Is that something that we're looking into that will be helpful as we move forward, you know, in addressing these kinds of issues with drones be more, used a bit more, deployed more to help with, you know, addressing crime or being the eyes and ears of the police department?
I think it's fair to say we have one of the more established drone programs in the area. It's much more advanced than where I came from. You know, but drones are really still in their infancy. They do provide some valuable intelligence, but right now, they are incident-specific. It's not like they're sitting around and we have a shooting and that we can immediately just hit a button, put a drone up, and start capturing video. You know, we used a drone on the search warrants Sunday morning to give us an aerial view of where our officers were going to serve those search warrants. So it is time and incident-specific, and there is a significant cost to drones. And sometimes they fly off still, and they don't come back. So drones still have a lot of technology issues, I think, to work out. The way technology is moving at a rapid pace, do I see drones playing a big part in law enforcement? I see them playing a big part in a lot of different areas as we move forward. But right now, they're pretty much used on a limited occurrence.
Well, thank you for your responses, and I will note, you mentioned something that is really important, and that is that this is not something that the police department can do alone, that it is a community effort, and we are going to have to work together as leaders, law enforcement, citizens, everyone working together to address this issue. And I think that was a very poignant point that you made. So thank you for the briefing. Thank you for your efforts. And that concludes my comments and questions for now.
Thank you, Mr. Wood.
Thank you. And Chief, I appreciate you being here. I know it's tough on your officers now. It's a tough time to be in law enforcement, obviously, and I just want to thank your officers for what they've done. And you didn't mention this, but hopefully the officer who was struck by the car is doing okay.
He is. He was one of the first calls that I made Friday night to check on him. He had already been treated and released, told me he was in good spirits, and I believe the staff has talked to him since then. But he's in good spirits. But like you mentioned, and I think it goes back, we had a tragic night. We're talking about a lot of different tragedies, but there was a lot of positive response by the men and women of this organization that we cannot forget about. They ran to gunfire. They did exactly what you would expect of your police department, that when you have five individuals that open up on a crowd, they didn't shirk away from that. They ran to that gunfire, made an immediate arrest. 100-plus officers responded to that scene. I'm telling you, sir, I can't tell you how chaotic it was and what our men and women were facing. Just looking at some of the footage that I've seen from that night and what our officers did, in the totality, we have to be very proud of their response to manage that incident.
And we're very grateful for that, I can tell you. And I know one thing, people were talking about the body cameras. I do want to point out to members of council that you do have this document at your place, which the city auditor, who is here, provided, just indicating that since beginning of January, he's actually been auditing the body camera operations, independent of any incident. So I know he had indicated to me he was still four or five weeks out before he'd have a report, but I think that's important for everybody to know. It was interesting, when all this stuff came up, I was reading a lot about body cameras again, and I have to say that the city did a good job when we first rolled them out. We did not immediately deploy body cameras without a policy, and Captain Todd Jones and his staff did an incredibly good job in terms of putting this whole process together and figuring out policies and everything. And what I found interesting is about 92% of the time, there was a George Mason study, about 92% of the time, body cameras are used for prosecution, only about 8% of the time for officer discipline. So it's kind of interesting. I mean, they are a valuable tool, and you had indicated that officers now want to always have them on, and I feel certain that the officer involved in the shooting probably wishes his was on at the time. So that's just kind of a statement. Another statement I have before I get to my questions is, and I completely agree with what my colleagues have said with respect to, and what you've said with respect to being a comprehensive approach to fix these issues down at the oceanfront. We want the beach to be open to all.
Yes, sir.
Unless you're here to do bad things, and then we don't want it to be attractive to you at all if you're here to do bad things. So obviously, one of the ways that we can do this is put more officers on the street. I know that's a very tough, tough thing that we need to address. So getting to my questions, and I'll just ask each question. Mr. Mayor, if you'd indulge me, I've got about five questions here. The first one, you had indicated in my notes here, you took about 14 guns off of people that evening, and I assume since the ATF was involved, most of these guns likely were not legal? Is that a fair assumption?
I don't know that they all came off of individuals. They could have been stashed. I was provided the information that we recovered a total of 14 firearms from that incident. The exact set of circumstances. The problem, well, I would have to check with staff. I don't know that any of them were stolen. I have not received that information. What we will do is etrace every one of them, find out where they originated, but that is a very cumbersome process when we ask that of the ATF. I'm not sure if anyone's familiar with the TARD Amendment, which prohibits the ATF from keeping an electronic database of firearms. You know, the Second Amendment plays heavy in this country, and the majority of citizens don't want an electronic record of what they own. So when we ask them to etrace a firearm, that means that they have to pull the initial record to find out from where the manufacturer sent it to the distributor. The distributor sent it to that first FFL. Then they have to go to that very first federal firearms licensee and try to pull that record. But what we find out, Vice Mayor, the vast majority of these times, that gun has transitioned into several hands.
Right.
By the time it arrives here in the beach or shows up at a crime scene.
So, but I guess, and again, using, and people, somebody had asked about, I guess Ms. Wilson asked about the backgrounds of some of the folks, and I know that I saw in the media that at least one of the individuals, can't remember his name now, was a multiple convicted felon. So he clearly did not have the legal ability to possess a firearm, so clearly he was doing something illegal. And I guess you mentioned the gang activity. So that probably is an issue with that. You mentioned also still focus on the guns. It sounds like to me, based on what you're saying, you know, upwards of 100 gunshots? Does that sound about right?
I would say that that is probably realistic.
I had seen a video that somebody had shared with me showing, and this is what really disturbed me, somebody, I don't know where on Atlantic Avenue, but holding a gun up in the air and just firing four or five rounds into the air, and that's, and I don't know, might not even recover that information because it doesn't look like he was firing at people, he was just shooting in the air. And that's certainly problematic. So, technology issue, and this may be a question for the manager, so forgive me. People talk about the oceanfront cameras, and I looked in the CIP. It looks like that we've spent about $3.5 million, we're spending another $300,000 this year to augment that. And of course, my question, obviously, if you read the public write-up on this, I'm not revealing anything that's confidential, it indicates that we have about 50% of the oceanfront that's not covered. So would this additional $300,000 provide us additional coverage, or do we need to allocate more for that?
Vice Mayor, are you talking about the current budget or the proposed budget?
I'm looking at the proposed budget that you gave us last week that I brought with me.
The proposed budget will give us additional coverage. It won't do 100% of the oceanfront or to the level that the police chief wants, but it will give us additional coverage beyond what we already have right now.
So if you could add to your list of budget questions, one from me on that, to find out what it would take to get us closer to 100% on that, that would be helpful because I think we need to do that. Staffing, obviously, has been an issue. You and I have had this discussion in person about this repeatedly, the manager and I have had this discussion. I had asked you the question when we were in one of our WebEx meetings, if our authorized staffing was at the right level. I don't know if you remember, that question was a few weeks ago, and you said at that time you weren't 100% sure. I guess obviously you now believe that our authorized staffing needs to be higher than what it is. Is that accurate?
I think that's absolutely accurate. You know, we're 100 officers short. But with the things that I would like us to do, which goes back to a dedicated violence-reduction unit to address that grouping gang activity, expanding our community engagement initiatives. For a long time, we have asked five or six people to be the face of our community engagement initiatives for 450,000 residents. We're asking a lot, and I think we're doing the community a disservice by not having more officers dedicated to engagement. So what I envision, when we can stabilize our recruiting and retention and numbers, is that we will have dedicated community liaison squads in all of the precincts comprised of a sergeant and five to six officers to really engage and be that conduit between the community and the police. There are a number of things that we would like to do if we had available staffing. I would love to see us look at maybe a fifth precinct that would be solely built around oceanfront operations.
So, and those would be great things to do if we add the staffing, obviously.
Absolutely.
And if we're 100 people down, we're a precinct down, basically.
Yes, sir.
So I know we're doing a, the manager's doing a compensation survey, a market salary survey that we're working on. I know that you have requested, and it's in this budget, to do a cadap program to try to bring people in and kind of grow in-house police officers from the community. What else can this council do? What are the solutions? Because none of that is going to do it. And one of my questions, and I've had this discussion with others as well, is even if we hire new people, you know, you're talking, what, 18 months before they are on their own on the street? You know, there's going to be six months, six and a half months of the academy, then they're going to have their field training process and all that, and it's going to be a significant amount of time before you actually have one additional car on the street to handle calls for service. So obviously, the other way about that is recruiting certified officers. I know that at that point, it's a compensation issue, and it's a quality of life issue and all that. Is that something that you're working on studying to bring in certified officers? Is that something that you're, and then, so the two you're, and then, so the two questions are, what can we do, and what else are you all doing?
Chief, I'll start. That's one of the, Vice Mayor, that's one of the scopes of part of the market salary survey, particularly included a segment of the scope for them to look at what kind of tools or tactics and strategies we can use to focus on recruiting certified officers from places. So we're looking at what kind of things we can do to kind of entice folks to relocate to Virginia Beach.
Okay. And then the only other question I have is, we could go back to the officer-involved shooting piece of this. Obviously, you can't reveal a lot of this information in general, but, and I know that you, that has been revealed in the media, the officer is a five-year veteran, member of special operations, presumably, they're, you know, fully qualified police officer, passed background checks, things like that. Is there anything else, generally speaking, that you can tell us without, obviously, identifying the officer or anything like that?
No, everything I know, he is a valued member of this department, highly regarded. And I think it's, you know, right now, it's tragic that this has occurred. And I know that our detective bureau will work diligently alongside VSP as we make this transition, for them to further gather all the information, to present it to Mr. Staley to make a determination on what occurred that evening.
Vice Mayor, one quick request.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
Mayor, Chief, just for clarification's sake, can you please clarify what exactly the role VSP is going to play? Because, you know, I think when we talked, it was not necessarily a full-scale turnover, just to be clear, just so everybody understands.
Yes, sir. Since you and I had talked previously, we'd had, I've had a conversation with Mr. Staley. There's been additional conversations with the Virginia State Police. I believe there should be a meeting this afternoon for us to all clarify our roles. Last conversation I had is that we would truly be handing this off now, and that they would be assuming the investigation. But I've not been part of that conversation to confirm that that is what we're looking at.
Okay, Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, thank you very much for your presentation today. You've done an outstanding job of presenting the, what I would, I guess, refer to the needs that the department have for dealing with the issues that we're confronted with here today. My question is, when would you be able, in conjunction, I'm sure, with the city manager, to bring us a plan of implementation that would achieve the goals that you outlined to us earlier today? Mr. Dehaney may want to answer that question.
Councilmember Jones, are you talking, which specific plans are you talking about? Are you talking about the stuff for the oceanfront or for the restructure?
Well, I think it's probably twofold, to be honest with you. Our immediate concern right now is what's happening at the oceanfront and dealing with it, because we're heading into the tourist season, and we need to try to avoid having another incident of this type happening at the oceanfront. But that's not the long-term goal, I don't think, as much as it is dealing with the needs that the chief has outlined as far as the police, the public safety is concerned. And I'd like to know how long it's going to take for that type of a plan to be formulated, and then what would be the timeframe for implementation. And we need to, of course, understand that that's going to create budgetary needs in order to implement. And I'd like to know how much that's going to cost us in terms of budgetary concerns, so.
That's something that we could definitely work on and provide to the council. You know, definitely, I think you pointed out the key point, Councilmember Jones, is that this is going to be something that we're going to have to work over a series of budget cycles, in particular because of the staffing component of it, and then varying, what everybody knows here as well in the conversations we've been having, how difficult it has been to recruit police officers. We can definitely work on putting something together to bring forward a document of what it looks like and where we want it to go, but then talk out also what it looks like from, in terms of implementation on, in a series of budget cycles to get to what the chief is asking for.
I just think we need to have a plan and get started on it. And maybe we can't accomplish all of it in one year, but at least we can, we know where we're heading, in other words. And that would be my goal, at least, in trying to deal with the issues. Thank you again, Chief, for outlining some of the needs that are here, and I appreciate your presentation today.
Thank you, Councilmember Jones.
Ms. Henley.
Well, I too appreciate the presentation, and I appreciate the difficult situation we're in, and the need to be very measured and very careful about what we say. But I think we have got to stop being too careful and just make it very plain that people are welcome to come to Virginia Beach. We want people to come to Virginia Beach, but we do not welcome lawlessness. And to look at what occurred Friday night, I cannot find one ounce of justification for what went on down there. I too saw that video that had a person walking through the crowd, just shooting into the air. And that, there is no way to justify that by anybody's measure. Those bullets went up, and I guess they came down someplace. And it's a wonder there were not more innocent bystanders killed. And I think we really have to stop tiptoeing around the fact that it was this lawless situation that led to the tragedy of the two deaths and the injuries and the situation that we're in today. And I think the message that has to go out is that that is not acceptable, and we will not tolerate it. It is not acceptable for our residents in that area to be fearful, to have their homes shot at, to have people afraid to work at the oceanfront, and to go back to their hotels. That's not acceptable, period. And I think we just stop tiptoeing around that issue and just say, that is the message. Now, how do we achieve that? I'm a little concerned, and I don't understand, and I appreciate that, you know, there's been pressure to have an independent investigation. I'm a little confused about whether or not our department is going to continue to investigate at all what went on, and how that's going to be turned over, and how that's going to affect going forward, if you would adjust that a little bit more. But I just also want to say that I think the important thing for this council and for this community to say is that we do support our public safety people, all of those people who responded to help the injured, to try to get that situation under control, and that this council is the citizens' review panel that is going to be looking at this issue to make certain that it is properly done, that our department does operate properly, and that we do provide the proper safety to our citizens. And I think that's our responsibility. Yes, we're concerned about flooding this year, but our top priority is the safety of our citizens. And I think we have to make that very plain and timing, that we're in the budget now. This is the time that we do need to see that plan. What is it that you want? What is it that we need to have in order to have a department and a city that can meet the needs, and we're not sitting around saying, oh, we really should have done that? Let us know. Let us know, and let us be the ones who decide what we can afford and what we can't. Or maybe that's something else is going to have to not be done so that we can do it. So I think that's what I'm going to be looking for, particularly in the budget, is where are the gaps? What do we need to fix things that maybe are not exactly right with our public safety? And what's the process for us to do it? I think this is the message that we need to send out, that to our people and to our business people down at the oceanfront, the people who live down there, the people who come to visit, that Virginia Beach is going to be a safe place to be. And that, from this moment on, is the priority. Flooding, John, is just going to have to slip to number two, in my opinion. But I think that's it right now. But of the one thing that I would like for you to clarify for me is, what is going to be the role of the Virginia Beach Department in relation now to the Virginia State Police's investigation?
Like I said, Councilmember, and thank you, that meeting is going to occur this afternoon with Mr. Staley. But it is my understanding and belief, and it was my request, that we will take all of the work that we have done so far, and we will hand that off to the Virginia State Police, at which point they will put fresh eyes on it, evaluate everything we have, consult with Mr. Staley on additional steps that need to be done, and that we will take merely an advisory role to help educate them on the investigative steps that we have already taken. So our role will be diminishing in our scope and responsibility, but I'm sure we're going to still have a role, because we've done a large percentage of investigating already. We would not want VSP to miss something that we already have. So it is my intent that they assume that, and I believe that is the understanding. But I think that clarification will come out of this afternoon's meeting.
Well, you had mentioned that they, you know, have been asked to do other investigations and have a lot of other things on their plate, too. Is this going to slow down the investigation perceptibly?
Well, I think that goes back to, and it was a very, you know, that's a great question for, you know, the council and the community, that this is uncharted water for us. We have never turned one over. I am highly confident in the work capability of our officers to objectively conduct this investigation and provide that information to the Commonwealth's Attorney. But if the community has lost faith in our ability to do that, then that is something that we are going to have to consider. But as we move forward, I just want the community and the council to be aware that there are challenges. You know, VSP is a great organization, but we are one of many that are now asking them to take on this Herculean task. My understanding, and I don't want to speak for them, but I'm led to believe that they are several hundred troopers short, that they have the same challenges that we have. I know the night that this occurred, when we were managing three crime scenes, it's my understanding that they were working two shootings up on the highway at the same time. So there is concern that I have as your chief of police, that if we are going to reach to an outside agency, how soon can they be there? Because we all know how critically important it is to locate and process evidence, witnesses. If we are merely providing a stationary role, waiting for some outside independent investigative body to come to the beach, what does that look like? And I wish I could tell you. I don't know. And I don't know how that could potentially impact investigations, because the last thing that we would want to do was jeopardize the integrity of an investigation. But time does degrade it. So there is a potential.
Well, that's what I was afraid of. But I just want you to know that I didn't lose any faith in our Virginia Beach Department to do the investigation.
Thank you.
And I wish you were still doing it, because I'm afraid we are going to lose time. And I certainly want the message to be out that it's going to be safe down at the oceanfront this coming weekend and the rest of the summer.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Moss, and then Ms. Abbott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't attempt to plow any of the ground we've already plowed, because I think that wouldn't be the best use of our time. But I know we have met on more than one occasion to talk deeply about the force structure, readiness fatigue, and all the size of the force. It's regrettable that in past budgets, when I have consistently asked about the staffing level of our police department, the answer always was, we have enough. I think that's because a prior leadership thing didn't allow the truth to filters at the top. So I'm very happy to hear you actually telling some truth for a change, not you personally, but out of the department, from the leadership, that we are short, short independent of the vacancies we can't recruit for. I would ask that all those things that we've covered in those conversations, that didn't make it into the current budget, be talked about during your budget review, when you're time, you know, talk about your budget. Getting to Mr. Jones's point, because action is what gets product. I think what we need is a matrix. I think we need, needs to be laid out, much, I hate to say it, but a corrective action plan for the police department in terms of staffing that's spread over a number of years, because you can talk about what you can execute in terms of recruitment, you can talk about what you can deploy effectively in terms of cameras. There's just lots of things that go with that, so you make sure that you're not putting money where you can't, you know, deliver a product in a timely fashion. But I think, to my colleagues, that if we aren't seeing that at the budget, then we aren't really getting a handle about how you get to an end state within a reasonable period of time. And the CIP approach might be good. But in a future day, maybe, given that we have to deal with today, with the capacities and capabilities that we have, I don't know that we can execute and meet the public's expectation without over readiness fatigue on the force, if we're not calling, I know we've done this in the past, reaching out to other police departments and paying for that. But we can't solve our presence requirements by wearing out our folks. And I know you're cognizant of that, so I want to hear how we're going to maintain the presence that we feel that we need, at the same time, not making our force tired, tired forces make mistakes. And so you want people to be psychologically ready, physically fatigue-ready, and mentally ready to do that. So I'm interested in how we're going to accomplish that, because that does concern me. But also, you mentioned repeatedly in your remarks, and thank you for doing so, about a holistic approach. And you were very kind not to mention any names of any establishments, so you get an A in diplomacy there, Chief. But I think we do need to look and take ourselves to the legal edge, if I could use that, there's some risk factor there, and I know the city attorney will have to help us. But what we can do, to my colleague, to go and look at these places that are the predominant data source of calls, data sources of these issues, I think we need to make sure we're looking at that, too. Because I think, you know, the private sector and their performance is a team, is part of this holistic picture. So I hope that we could be getting some thoughts on that, Mr. City Manager, and in conjunction with the city attorney. I'd be happy to join in any of those conversations, to see how we can stay on the right side of the law, but also fully leverage the opportunities it presents to hold the private sector accountable for their contributions. But I have to say is, when you look at all this, when you look at the response of our force, independent of some of the questions, pretty miraculous when you look at it. Obviously, it was a tragic event, but absent the timeliness of how they responded, the tragedy could have been much worse. And I think, like I told the chief when I was chatting, no, the city manager and I was chatting with them, unfortunately, we don't have, use a TV show, the movie, we don't have Minority Report-like capabilities. We don't know who's going to commit a crime before they commit one. And you just can't go out and stop and frisk everybody to make sure what their status is. This is a free country, really, presence. But your ability to respond to an incident and to quickly shut it down, and then hold it accountable, is really the objective in that regard. And I applaud the force. I share Mrs. Henley's remarks, and I do think this council is the citizen review body. I think she's on target there. We hold the seat chief and the police, city manager accountable. But also, that I do have faith that our police department could do that. But I realize that's not a universally held belief. And so I'm also willing to support what the police chief and the city manager thinks. You've got a better ground look at that. But timing is important, and I'm sure everybody and all the stakeholders want something in a timely fashion. But most importantly, I'm interested in how we're going to provide the short-term capacity and capability, and at the budget, see this larger programmatic matrix. And I'm hoping I'm going to at least see addressed in the discussion, some of the conversations we've had about, not just the recruitment, but just the structuring of the force itself, and how that, because retention, just hiring people is not enough. It's the wisdom of the force. It is the maturity of the force that gets you the right judgment exercise that prevents escalation. So continuity of the force is more than just the numbers. So continuity of the force is more than just the numbers, it's the distribution of experience. And we've got to deal with both of those. I really didn't have a specific question, but I did want to share with my thoughts. But the suggestion about the matrix and the plan was a real suggestion.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Ms. Abbott.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief, for being here today. And of course, I share all the sentiments made by my colleagues, and I offer my condolences to those that were, lost their lives and their families, and those injured, and of course, and all those, all individuals impacted. I wanted to touch on two specific questions. You've kind of grazed over them, but I, my first question is in regards to body worn cameras, because this is something I've heard a lot of feedback from, like many of my colleagues here. Can you walk me through exactly, since this is new technology, how is an officer trained to deploy their camera when, when they need to activate it? Because that, that has been, that has been where I've found, in the feedback I've received over the last couple of days, where people are not understanding, and I'm not understanding. So if I'm an officer, how am I taught to use that camera?
They are taught to activate it. It is a double tap on the actual device to put it into the activate mode when they were responding to any number of these occurrences that we just outlined. But there is some human capacity in there, that, you know, you could be confronted with an immediate threat, and the last thing that you're probably thinking about is, "I've got to activate my camera first." No, you're going to think about saving your own life or the life of someone else first before you activate the camera. And that's why we built, you know, that's why it has a 30-second buffer built into it, because we know with human nature, there are going to be circumstances that occur that are not clean and sterile, and that's not going to be the first thing on an officer's mind. And I think that's where the signal sidearm plays in there. If you have a situation that is rising to the level that you feel that you need to pull your firearm, and you're not thinking about activating your camera, it automatically does that for you. But it's new technology. This is not something, when we talk about body cameras, in a lot of departments, you know, the previous agency, we went to them three years ago, full deployment. But they are just now in the process of having issued and working out the kinks. And like I mentioned last night, even if we had that technology, there's a chance that it could malfunction, because it's, it's a Bluetooth connection. So as we move forward, it's very important for council, the community to understand, we rely on technology, but technology is not infallible. There could be occurrences where it does not perform the way that we want. So cameras have been extremely beneficial to policing as a whole. You know, my experience is, most cops, they want them. You know, some of us that have been around for a while, you know, it, it's hard to embrace technology. But the new generation, they embrace it wholeheartedly, and they understand. And I think to the Vice Mayor's point, you know, what we have found from body cameras is it increases our conviction rate, you know, significantly. So they are using the camera because it helps them do their job, and helps them secure convictions that historically we have not had.
Thank you. I appreciate that. At a later time, I'd be interested in, in learning more about how officers are trained in greater detail, but that's not necessary for today. The other question I had was in regards, you, you mentioned a couple times, community engagement task force, I think that's how you were wording it, or something similar?
We have historically had a centralized community engagement unit with the onus of trying to make sure that all 800 of our officers are engaging in community engagement activities. But, you know, we find that as dynamics change, calls for service load increases, different demands, it's very hard for the average rank and file to be that community engagement officer that we would expect of all of our officers. They find themselves in a car, racing from radio run to radio run, they don't have the ability to get out and walk and talk to the community, because there's competing interest. And I've heard it for years, is we want more foot patrol, we want more visibility, and we want you to get to our radio runs quicker. So you can see that it is, you know, it's competing interest. Because if we have officers out engaging the community on foot, we don't have as many people in radio cars, and beat cars, and zone cars that are, so it is a challenge. But I firmly believe in bolstering our community engagement numbers. So I have decentralized those community liaison officers from a centralized, put them under the command of each of the four precinct commanders, as well as placed one down at Lita to help with some established programming. So the, the thought and idea is that they are now dedicated to that specific precinct, working with the communities within that precinct, accountable to that precinct captain, to really engage the community, so that I can hold, you know, the precinct captain accountable for their community engagement efforts. But one officer is woefully inadequate.
So my question in regards to that, then, is if, if it's, if we're trying to put a focus on, and I think that's a great, a great effort to do, so I commend you for that, are any of those positions, can they not be filled by a sworn officer? Can we, in terms, because obviously, Councilman Wood has mentioned, others have mentioned that the, there is a lag time in getting an officer on board, assuming we have someone who is ready and willing. Is there an ability to fill any of that with non-uniformed officers or non-sworn officers that can help be liaisons, if you will, to our communities, to help inform the police and help build that trust and transparency? And, you know, what can we do now? And if, if there is something, if there are other communities doing something, what is the cost of that, Mr. City Manager, and how do we program that into our budget? I know we, I've heard from many members of our community who have asked for similar programs that engage the public more directly, and ask the, those of our community that acknowledge that there is a huge issue that we all need to be addressing as a team, how do we, how do we start plugging more people in, even if they're not officers? Obviously, we want more officers in that regard. You know, I, I, I think that plays into our recruitment, too. So I'm really eager to see how we can bring more people into it and, and hold us all, make us all part of the solution.
Chief, I'll start, you can clean up.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Abbott, definitely there are opportunities for community engagement organizations that aid in public safety that's non-police, that's definitely used for things like violence disruptors, or community outreach, and, in terms of like, working with the public as well. And, but you can never, ever really replace the public safety officer, because whenever they're actually dealing with a situation, the community, they look at it from a different lens. But it is definitely an opportunity to look at it holistically, because there are things that individuals that aren't sworn, they can have conversations and go certain places that breed a level of different kind of trust than folks, some, some people feel with police officers. So there are opportunities for like, a community engagement office with some aspect of civilian, but you can't really replace the police component of it. It's really good if you can bring them both together to work holistically. You know, so definitely, I can give you some ideas on what that looks like, you know, because from previous experience as well, there was a specific unit inside the city manager's office that worked in collaboration with the police department to address community outreach with police issues and community issues in collaboration with the police department. So I can give you some ideas on what that looks like.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Councilmember, if I can just follow up, I think the police department, and what I've seen, and, and the staff, prior to my arrival, have done a, a pretty admirable job of trying to identify positions that could be civilianized, so that we could put officers back on the streets, you know, with a civilianized entire crime analysis unit, strictly comprised of professional staff and not sworn officers. But to the manager's point, we're looking to make those long-lasting, immediate relationships between sworn officers and our community. And it really has to be the officers, because when we encounter them, under maybe less-than-desirable circumstances, we want that connection to exist, so that we can reach each other as, you know, person to person, human to human, not just the uniform, and not just a citizen that we're encountering, but that we're encountering, you know, between Paul and, and Jessica, that there is that connection. And I think it goes back to, you know, we have 35-plus sworn officers that are school resource officers, or maybe closer to 40. Could they be replaced with some other capacity? They could, but I think that would do us a huge disservice, because everything that I have seen since I've been here, they love their school resource officers, those SROs have such a, a strong connection with the students and with the community. The use of those officers there, it does place a burden on the police department, especially when we're struggling, but the relationships that we're building, invaluable.
Okay, Mr. Rouse.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Chief. I know you've been standing there quite some time.
Sure.
Bear with me just a, a little bit longer. Two things. First, my colleagues touched on a number of issues that I, I just want to kind of have some comments about, and then questions about. First, that to the officer-involved shooting, were there any witnesses to the shooting, at all?
I believe we have one individual that may have witnessed portion of that.
And is that, is that individual a law enforcement officer, or is...
This would be one individual outside of the two officers.
Okay. So if there, the two officers that was sat to see were both wearing body cameras, or was just one?
No, sir. Just the uniformed officer. The second officer was a plainclothes detective.
Okay.
Working the original crime scene.
Okay. And so I guess my question would be, do you think it would be prudent to have a policy in place for plainclothes detectives or officers who are working crime scenes to maybe have on cameras?
Absolutely not.
Okay.
And, and I'll tell you why. Many times, when we're encountering citizens from a detective position, and that, this is not talking about like, drug detectives and all that who are undercover, but if you put a body camera on a homicide detective that's out on the street, and you walk up to somebody and start to ask them questions about a horrific crime that just occurred...
Sure.
We already struggle now.
Right.
Put a body camera on them, and our closure rate will, will drop to single digits.
Okay. Was the, the officer of the shooting, that interaction, was Mr. Lynch, was he being actively pursued by officers? How did that interaction?
Yeah, you're, you're asking questions that are part of that criminal investigation, Mr. Rouse, that I'm not prepared nor capable to answer. Those are the circumstances that have to play out in the investigation, and that information has to be turned over to Mr. Staley.
Okay. And my, my question is that, because the VBPD released the, the picture of a firearm being found, but we don't, we don't know the circumstances of that firearm, especially I've heard from my colleague, if Mr. Lynch was a concealed weapons permit holder, he could have very well have been lawfully have it at firearm. And I'm not trying to, I'm just trying to understand the interaction, which I guess is something we'll be looking forward to in the investigation.
Yes, sir. And I apologize for not being able to expound upon that, but that is, that is what the criminal investigation will uncover. The reason that we put out the pictures of the gun is because there was such an overwhelming public narrative, that there was not a second firearm involved, and that Mr. Lynch was completely unarmed, that we had to just put it out there, that we did not have the ability to ignore the public outcry.
Okay. And I guess, you know, I would like, if, if there's information to be released, you know, and understand the public outcry, I think we've got to be very, very careful about releasing of information, because it, it feeds into different narratives and conspiracy theories, and doesn't allow the facts to take us where, where we, where it may, or where it lead. Okay, so thank you for that.
Yes, sir.
My next question, or it really is a comment on the community engagement piece. Prior to you being sworn in here, we've had extensive community relations with communities that, that typically saw a high rate of issues or, or crime within their communities. You and I, you know, just very recently, we, we sat down with teachers and other community leaders on a shooting that was happening in a neighborhood where some, some very little ones were, were injured. And so my question, or the comment centers around this holistic approach. Because if we are 100, 150, 200 officers, an entire precinct down, how do we expect to build community relationships with police if they're constantly revolving around the city, and we're pulling them to the oceanfront, we're pulling them to Kansas City, we're pulling them to Bayside, we're pulling them around? And so I would ask for this council to really look at and understand, not just from a salary perspective, that's, that's part of it, but also from housing. That's a major issue, workforce housing, making sure the officers that we can hire here, can serve here, live here, and become familiarized themselves with the community. And so which leads me to, my next question is, can you speak just about the training that your officers go, go through, encountering the communities around which they serve? Can you speak to that, to that nature?
I mean, we have probably one of the best police academies in the state of Virginia. We far exceed what is required by the Department of Criminal Justice Service. And I think everything that I have seen, and speaking to the training staff, community service and interaction is, is built into all the training components. There's not just a specific training component to address community engagement, it's built into everything that we do from a training standpoint. And that's what we really want our officers to realize, is that we're there to, to serve the community.
And I think, you know, again, just, if, if time, and if a delay in an investigation is, is, is more so the concern about understanding these events that just passed happened, I think to be proactive, here's, I think it's the perfect opportunity to do, to discuss a citizens' review board, and what role it plays within our community. I think it's a great opportunity to build trust, to build that faith that some may have lost within the policing in our community. So I think here, we, we have an opportunity. It's up to council to decide whether or not we're going to seize that opportunity. And this isn't something that we have to decide alone. Chief, I think you would agree when I say that there is safety in numbers. We all must come to that table and understand, how can we build a community, community review board that works with the police, that works with the community, that works with this body, to build that trust up, to have that community engagement? I think we have that opportunity in front of us, and it's up to us to seize it. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Tower.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, and thank you, Chief. I don't want to keep you there any longer than necessary.
All good.
I know you've got other things to do, but I do have a couple of comments I'd like to make, and a couple of questions. I first want to join my colleagues in expressing condolences to the innocent citizens who were, and their families and loved ones, or those who were injured or killed in this Friday night. I want to express my thanks to our police for doing their, everything they do that night and every other night. I know they do their best to keep us safe. On a personal note, I didn't know the deceased, Ms. Harris, but I carry on my phone a photo of Mr. Lynch and his father, and me, at a, taken at a happier time at a, an event at the future home of the African-American Cultural Center. And so I, I felt very personally impacted. I don't know Mr. Lynch well, but I, I know his father is a person that is held in great respect in this community, and has done a lot, a lot for us. So I think we can't help but feel sympathy for those folks, and everyone else who may not have been physically affected by it, but was terrified by the event, and, and particularly has to deal with children, and their reaction to it, and others. It is, we have a disease in this country involving hundreds of millions of guns, more, more guns than people. It is a public health problem, and until we recognize it as a public health problem, we're going to continue to suffer from it. Not that we can reverse that problem, even if we acknowledge it, but I do, I do honestly believe it is a significant public health problem and needs to be treated as such. I didn't expect to have a city council meeting this month, I mean, this week, so I scheduled some long-delayed cardiac surgery that I needed for a while last week, and as I was recuperating in the hospital and at home, and before this event happened, I had turned my attention to our responsibilities as council in terms of public safety. to our responsibilities as council in terms of public safety. Ms. Henley, and I thank her for this, had provoked me to look more carefully, for example, at our short-term rental ordinances. And I spent a while killing time until I was able to get up and move around, reading ordinances in other cities and what they do to keep people safe in short-term rentals. And then coincidentally, I started reading about a case in the Ninth Circuit of the United States that just happened that said, written by actually a very conservative judge in a fairly liberal circuit, but a conservative judge wrote a 217-page opinion detailing the history of the responsibility of government, which is the part I really want to focus on today, but the obligations of government to protect people in public spaces. And while this may be a controversial decision in some areas, actually the Fourth Circuit in which we live has made a similar, not quite as extensive decision in that way, but it is clear that we have the right and the obligation to protect people in our public spaces. And that includes the right to deal with this firearm problem. So we cannot shuck it off and say, well, the federal government, the courts won't let us do it. As things stand now, at least, we do have the right to deal with that. The problem is, and I'm sure Chief, I'll start with the question, how difficult is it to police firearms that are carried, concealed carried firearms in a crowd of people on a Friday night in Virginia Beach?
Virtually impossible, sir.
And that is because, let's, if you were determined to, if you told officers, use your best judgment, you're experienced police officers, use your best judgment and if you see someone that you think is carrying a weapon, follow up on that, what happens?
Well, I would say due to the proliferation of concealed carry permits across the nation and in Virginia, mere carrying of a firearm would no longer provide reasonable suspicion for us to engage you in any manner.
And it's true, isn't it, that actually there's no academic research that would support that even experienced policemen are able to detect because of eye movements or habits or touching various parts of their body, that people, that you can accurately determine who's carrying a weapon, whether or not they are legal or illegal.
My experience is that experienced detectives can have that little bit of innate sense to detect people that are carrying firearms, but now that the mere carrying of a firearm and a concealed firearm is probably under 98% of the time legal and legitimate, we would not be stopping those individuals. When that was really prevalent is there was not CCW legislation, so the vast majority of people that were carrying firearms in this country were doing so illegally. So it was a whole different set of circumstances. Now, the fact is that the vast majority are legally carrying, so there would have to be some other type of conduct for us to intercede with somebody and determine the circumstances of whether they're carrying a firearm legally or not.
Thank you. I mean, I just think there's so many people whose gut reaction is, well, we're just reacting. You know, we have to be proactive about this. I think from the policing standpoint, it is very difficult to think of how you can deal with this situation in a non-reactive way. I am looking forward to getting the reports in the long term about how we can provide more technology, more personnel, whatever it takes. I think several of my colleagues have made that point well, and I won't repeat it, but I am looking forward to getting that. I do want to say on behalf of the folks with whom I'm in touch on the oceanfront that we hear you. I think I really sympathize with the small business people who are trying to make business, support their families at the oceanfront and are overwhelmed, not even by the gunfire, but simply by the crowd control of people who simply block entrances to stores who, I mean, it is not true that our merchants are benefiting enormously by these large crowds. Many of them are not here to spend money, they're not here to enjoy cotton candy or buy T-shirts even, they're here to party, or in their words perhaps, or to make trouble in many of our words. And it's really very negatively affecting our business community. Our local residents who live in that area around Old Beach, around Shadow Lawn, around the north end and south of that, there are, I've gotten a lot of, are you aware of a STR, shooting near an STR, short-term rental, 26th Street?
Not personally, I know Captain Wickendall, I believe, was looking into that for you.
Okay, so I just want to make sure people that are watching that have contacted me about that know that we're aware of it and are following up on it.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. I want to talk about, just a moment about my feelings about the police force and our responsibilities and their responsibilities. I view the police force as the most professionalized group of folks that we have in our employ. I put them right up there with our city attorneys who are, and I'm the only attorney on council, and I will tell you, I've become accustomed over my life and welcome the fact that my actions as an attorney are subject to scrutiny, to review, and even expulsion from, and loss of my ability to practice if I do not do it within the procedures that I'm required to do. That is the mark of a professional. And I believe our police understand that. Certainly, I want our citizens to understand that our council holds our police responsible that way and makes no apologies for doing it. Indeed, as a tribute to our police, that they expose themselves, not only to the dangers that they do, but to review from citizens, from their peers. It's a multifaceted process that sets you apart as a profession that deserves respect. Having said that, I want to say there are processes in place, and frankly, this Virginia State Police thing has caught me completely by surprise, I really didn't realize we were going to do that. But my point is, that's also a process that is established in state law. Now, there are ways to do that, this is not something we made up on the spot. The Virginia State Police have been taking on investigatory things, with things going on in municipal government for quite a while, that's not new. So the processes are in place, whether it's the Congress Attorney, whether it's the Internal Affairs Investigation, or the Virginia State Police. And I fully support those processes. That's, those are the processes we are following, and those processes substantially protect the public, the rights of people who may be accused of crimes, and members of the police force from dire consequences if we didn't follow the process. That is not to say that I think the processes we have are the ones that we are good enough. They aren't, I don't think they are good enough. I've made it clear that my view is that the time has come for us to take advantage of what our state legislature's given us the power to do, to create some different ways of doing things, or at least start the discussion of how, is it necessary, have a fuller discussion of it. I don't want to cut that discussion off, but I do want to emphasize my total support of the processes that are in place and my belief from looking at them, that they are more than adequate to deal with this particular officer-involved shooting, and I think justice will be done. That's my speech. I think my only question to you, Chief, going forward is, would you go over one more time what your force issues are for the coming weekends in Virginia Beach? I want to talk just so that residents and business folks know what to expect this weekend in Virginia Beach.
Yes, sir, thank you, council member. For this weekend, we will have the dedicated Second Precinct Oceanfront staff of approximately 13 officers, and we are looking to augment them with 15 additional officers from our Special Ops Bureau. Like I indicated, we are also putting cars on standby in the outlying precincts, that if we have a need to pull them down, then we will pull them down to the oceanfront to augment the 28 that we have currently.
On the traffic situation per se, that's been mentioned, the cruising, the crowding, are there any particular traffic control plans in place going forward for the summer, really, this weekend and going forward?
That is a discussion that the staff and I have been having, that we need to look holistically of what a traffic pattern looks like. I know that we have something that we currently use, but we need to take a look to see if there's something that we can do better to help mitigate that. Because quite honestly, I went to dinner Friday night, was leaving the oceanfront area before I got home, and this event occurred and I had to return, and I struggled with the traffic. So, you know, I was already going to have that conversation with staff that we've got to do something a little bit better because I saw exactly what everybody else saw.
Well, one of the concerns I have is to make sure that resident, oceanfront area residents understand that there may be traffic control measures coming that may be in fairly short, on fairly short notice, and that they should plan accordingly if there are, if the weather is right, if there's evidence that there may be that kind of crowding. They may not be able to get home exactly on time or exactly the way that they normally come. So I just want to put a warning out there, and if I'm wrong, tell me if you don't think that's going to happen, but I...
Council member, when we get to that point, we would make sure that we communicate that well in advance.
Okay, good, well, I would just alert people to be keeping an eye, that residents of the oceanfront area, keeping an eye out for those kinds of notices.
Yes, sir, we would not surprise anybody.
Okay, thank you so much, Chief.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Bulger.
Well, Chief, I just want to thank you for the time you spent with us this afternoon and for your responses to all of the questions from council. And I just want to as well join my colleagues in expressing my condolence for those who lost their lives and those who were injured in the events that occurred on Friday night. And I also want to take this opportunity to express my respect and my appreciation for the men and women who serve our community on our police force. Obviously, there's an investigation underway about the officer-involved shooting, so I'll just keep my comments general about our police department. The men and women I know who serve the police department do so with professionalism, with distinction, and display a level of courage and dedication that I frankly have a hard time comprehending. The events that they are forced to contend with that could evolve at any moment are just, are ones that I think many of us really have no understanding of the pressures and threats that exist, and I just know that our community is very well-served at the resort and all throughout the city by the men and women of the Virginia Beach Police Department. And so I appreciate you and your colleagues and all the work they do to promote our safety.
Yes, sir, thank you, council member. Everything you just said, in my short time here, I've found to be true, that these are tremendous men and women that are serving the city, they are dedicated, you have a tremendous police department that I'm privileged to be part of. Thank you.
Yeah, well, I absolutely agree. And, you know, I think that there's something special about the people who choose the field of law enforcement because of the dangers associated with the job and the unique work that's associated with it. You really have to be a person who is, who loves your community and is dedicated to the citizens who live in a community to risk your own safety to protect the safety of others. And so I just have a tremendous amount of respect for that and for the challenges they face. But one thing I would like to talk about is what I think Council Member Henley touched upon, which is the sense of lawlessness at the resort. Prior to serving as a member of city council, I was a member of our Human Rights Commission, and we still have a very active Human Rights Commission who facilitate an observer program and are very active around holidays and throughout the, I think what we call the warm season, in observing what's happening there and helping to find solutions and bridge any divides that could exist. And I think that anyone who's been watching can really understand that there is a sense of lawlessness that has, in particular, seemed to have developed at the resort. And I think that the impact of this is, of course, it impacts commerce. I think that it has a negative impact on the experiences that residents and visitors have at the Virginia Beach Resort. And so those are impacts that are undesirable. But the worst impact of this lawlessness is injury and loss of life. And I think that Mrs. Henley really properly described, that's unacceptable. And so, you know, I guess it's more of a comment than a question, but I'd be interested if you have any response. I think that we have to work together, community stakeholders, business leaders, members of our community, to develop some new strategies for how to address the lawlessness that exists. And I'm not an expert on law enforcement, so I won't comment on the techniques that have been applied to date, but I think what we can tell from the trend that's emerged is that the techniques that have been applied to date have not been satisfactory. So I would just be really interested in either now or later, in what adjustments could be made when we see those crowds and when we see that behavior start to ramp up that ultimately leads to these breakouts of, I guess, violence and gunfire. How can we intervene to stop that before it gets to that point? And at the same time, maintain an environment that's hospitable and welcoming for visitors and for people who live here. So it's quite a challenge, but I think we need to, I think we all agree that we need to make some adjustments, and I'd be interested in your thoughts on that. Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you, council member. It's a very valid point. I think addressing individual conduct is always a challenge. Some of my experience is that we get more sustained, long-term results dealing with physical locations, you know, the crime, the comfort, the convergent, and the corrupting locations that attract crime and disorder. So I think we have to, you know, when we go back to addressing it holistically, from both a place-based perspective, an offender-based perspective, if we need to address certain conduct. And I think, you know, some of those conversations are already starting to be had about what, some enhanced focus on chronic nuisance and addressing things through civil litigation and holding property owners accountable. My experience is that is a tremendous tool in the toolbox that many times has longer-term sustained results than an arrest on a Friday night for some, you know, fighting in the street. Because I think as you indicated, you know, many people are coming down here, they want to enjoy themselves, and it's a very hard distinction between, you know, what is some loud, boisterous but legal conduct, and then when does it turn into criminal conduct that rises to the level that your officers need to address it? And it's a difficult dilemma, but I think long-term, we have to start looking holistically at the different options with a very, very strong, robust civil litigation piece.
Okay, anybody else? Yes, Ms. Wilkens.
Thank you. I just want to follow up on a comment that was made previously.
Thank you, I just want to follow up on a comment that was made previously by Councilmember Rouse. Before you, you have a resolution that's a draft that I mentioned last week regarding a task force that can look at the type of civilian review panel that we should have in our city to date. It will look at some of the issues that were brought out during some previous short conversations and discussions, and the task force will look at some of those areas. Feel free to add more to it if you'd like, but I think a, a task force that was, you know, suggested by the African-American Roundtable would be beneficial in providing some additional insight into what's needed, some of the concerns that we still have and we don't quite see eye to eye on. I think it would be beneficial to, to, to look at a task force to kind of go over those issues. And from the community's standpoint, you know, with something like this happening, again, this is the second time I've had community leaders say, how refreshing would it be to have an independent panel that's made of professionals with the right background and the right training, that's inclusive of some of our profound organizations in the area that address human rights issues and, and the like, and also is inclusive of citizens who are trained in that area? How refreshing it would be to have that type of panel to say, listen, they're involved and they're going to investigate and come out with findings for you regarding the event. And so I think it's an opportune time to continue the discussion as well, and to also have a task force to kind of address some of those issues that we still have, quite frankly, with addressing the Citizens Review Panel. So thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Mr. Moss.
I would just like, not today, but maybe a package Friday, if the city manager would just provide us what his takeaways were and what he thought, what direction he received from, collectively from us, so we could just affirm that later or see if something got missed, just so we'd know what we're, what path we're on, I'd appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, anyone else?
Okay, if I could just close with a few brief compliments, you've been up there, you know, standing up for a while, next time we'll make sure you have a chair, but once again, you know, I just want to thank you. And let me also convey that my thoughts and prayers go to the loss of life and the injuries, but also thoughts and prayers to the men and women who 24/7 serve us in a magnificent way. You know, often, 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 you are the solution to many of the problems that are out there. And just a clarification of my involvement over the weekend with you. We were involved in numerous discussions between each other with the city manager, with the city attorney, with the vice mayor, about how to approach this. And I myself did a number of interviews, you know, with TV, and I was also at the 19th Street Lot, and also had newspaper issue, interviews with New York Times. You know, it's a tough role as a mayor, you know, when you should come forward and when you should just sit back. And I think the one thing I learned in communicating with you before I did these interviews and with Captain Orr, the first 24 hours, you know, there was a lot of moving parts going on, complicated crime scenes multiple, and the last thing I would ever want to do was give out information, there was things going out on social media and everything. I confined my comments, you know, to let people know that there was an immediate response by the police, that the justice was served, and also to, you know, give assurances that an investigation is being underway. We also made a decision, instead of sending out a general press release, that we would let the information go out incrementally concurrent with what was going on. And, but, but once again, you know, just having you as a spokesman, you know, that that had a real touch on what goes on, and knowing that what can and can't, so I'd be given the, I think you articulated very well, you know, what goes on in an active investigation and what can and can't, you know, get out. So I thought that gave some clarity and, you know, things of that nature, but be assured that we're, you know, engaged going forward. But the other thing is, we do have, within this country, within this Commonwealth, within the 757 in Virginia Beach, a culture of youth violence that's going on. It, it's kind of a national phenomenon that's been growing in time. A lot of it comes with the fact that there are so many people that civility and respect are lost concepts. You know, back in the day, if you disrespected a police officer or a teacher, it wasn't worth going home. And, but once again, you know, the conversations that we've had, I came to the conclusion that this was also a very generic thing to our region. And that being said, going forward, over the last couple of days, I have spoke to all the other mayors in the 757. So all seven of the mayors were, you know, had welcoming phone calls about getting a mayor's task force on community safety together. As a matter of fact, Mayor Tuck from Hampton actually invited me to participate in the panel on April 12th, Mayor, you know, Price from Newport News. You know, it's a blend of, you know, we have, we have Caucasians, we have African-American mayors, you know, we're getting together, we're unifying, you know, with our police chiefs to come up with the solutions and learn best practices and what works. Gang activity and violence does not, is not confined to any border. And I think by us getting together and working proactively, you know, and getting the message out that, you know, the governments are serious about, you know, the evolving problem. You know, here in Virginia Beach, we are a tourist destination, we actually do have to be very, very proactive. But, but once again, I always wanted to give a sense of confidence, you know, that in the interviews that I did, that I was confident in our police department, and we're going to have a plan that as we go into the summer season and everything, you know, and, you know, with full engagement with the community and things, we can do this together. And for that, I just want to thank you very much, and God bless you, God bless your men and women, and at this point, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.